So Ms. Quaterell, what are you studying?
Well, today I actually just served my major in elementary education with an intensive middle school math.
We have a contract ready.
I'm actually thinking about 501. I'm a graduate, see, I went to Topeka High School, so.
Very good. Thank you very much. So, Dr. New?
Yes, sir. I'm proud of it. I'm proud of it. It's the trail.
Ready for a motion to adopt the agenda?
Mr. President, I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion and second, any discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, same side. Passes.
This is our favorite time of the board meetings to celebrate and acknowledge many people this evening. So we're gonna jump right in and we're going to start with our Senior of the Month. Now, the Senior of the Month is a student that is selected for the month from a different high school each month. And so at this time, before we start our Senior of the Month, we're gonna start off with the video about our senior and then invite our principal to come on up and have our senior just share a little bit in terms of answering questions from board members. So, for our Senior of the Month for this evening, we'll start off with our video.
Topeka Public Schools students to do. She leads in her community, she volunteers, she takes care of her grades, she models being a good student to other kids. And she's multi-talented, I mean, she's athletic, she's a great student, she's also involved in clubs, she's got a vision, she's got a purpose, she's got eyes on the prize, she's very mature, she's wise beyond her years. She just, when she does things, she goes all out.
I really love going to Topeka West, it's a really fun school, the teachers are really great, all the activities they have are really great, I think just like everything in general has kinda been like a comfy home and I'm just like leaving the nest now and going off to college.
Summer after sophomore year, she went to the Washington University's High School Leadership Academy and she really talked about creating a Black History Month event here at Topeka West because she felt like there was a need here. And she did it herself. That's mine. She does things and has a vision and sees them.
I guess what I'm proud of most is making the top 10 percent of my class, like, to be honest, I kinda slacked my freshman year and so I was really nervous to see if I would make it or not, and which I did, so I was really happy. I plan to major in psychology, really child and development, well, child and adolescent psychology. And I'm thinking of either going to the University of Missouri-St. Louis or Washington University, which it's been St. Louis, it's gonna be hard, it feels like a top school, so.
Keep your eyes on the prize, keep shining bright, and.
Yeah. Can't wait to see what the future looks like.
Topeka Public Schools, you did come on up, and this young lady, you may have heard from our convocation, who is just such an awesome individual. So I'll turn it over to Mr. D.
I'll be brief in my introduction of Kiora. Kiora's always been a Topeka Public Schools student, she's been from Elementary School of McClure to French to Topeka West, she's been here all those years, she's participated in lots of activities while she's at Topeka West. A couple of those are Link Group is one she's most proud of, she's a Link leader. She's been on the tennis team, she's been involved in track, she was a LEAP Award winner, she was the Martin Luther King Goldory Contest Award winner last year, hopes to be again this year. So, Kiora did a big range, wonderful student, very proud of Kiora, and she was our convocation speaker, and she probably remember.
Do you want them to ask you questions? Because they might ask questions. We're gonna turn it over for questions from the board for Kiora.
I guess it. Thank you, Mr. President. Should I wait until she's done after her? Yeah, well, I guess I'll ask you anyway, you probably are going to answer some of these. I'm kinda curious, so first of all, thank you very much for being here, I remember hearing you at the convocation, I was incredibly inspired by what you had to say. It meant a lot more to people, I think, than you realize, yeah, a lot of us. Questions just for you, I'm curious about you, you're so talented, you've done so many different things. What do you think you wanna be when you grow up? Where are you gonna go to school? And kinda what's the Kiora Brooks plan?
Oh, well, what I wanna be when I grow up is I wanna be a child and adolescent psychologist, but really I wanna grow to where I own my own like clinic for that. So, but where I'm thinking of studying right now is the University of Missouri-St. Louis or Washington University in St. Louis, it really depends on, because I'm already accepted into the University of Missouri-St. Louis and I really wanna do their honors program, but if Washington University accepts me, it might sway me a bit, but it all depends on, it all depends on how my scholarship stack really, see which college I go to.
Can you share your most memorable experience of high school? Any of your life experiences? Or as to your most recent experience?
Um, to be honest, I don't really have a specific most memorable experience, uh, it's just in general, my experience at Topeka West has been really great. I've been involved a lot and it's just like amazing, all the opportunities that have been like placed in front of me to like join in at Topeka West, it's just, I don't know, it's just a really great school, so I can't really own in on just like one memorable experience, it's just all great.
So, do you have a teacher that inspires you?
Oh, well, um, Ms. Steinkoller, she's the gifted facilitator at Topeka West, um, she's really helped me a lot, um, we talk a lot, she's my independent study teacher as well, and she's really helped me with like college choices and like scholarship discussions and everything like that. And she's also recommended me for a lot of things and really helped like open up opportunities for me. And so, yeah, that'll be the teacher for me, Ms. Steinkoller. Oh, yes, uh, my mom, I'm sure she's here with me.
All the staff members of Topeka Public Schools are here. It is a question, will you come around here, future Dr. Brooks? It says, Topeka Public Schools recognizes Kiora Brooks as Senior of the Month for the 1st from the 18th of September. We're gonna be taking pictures at the end as well, Ms. Nick, do you have an idea?
We do, it's not even the time, Washington University stuff or University-St. Louis. And Becca, so we got you some Topeka West stuff.
Our next highlight is one of our fantastic programs who have a new leader just around the time that I started as well. And we'd like for our Parents as Teachers team to come on up and our leader will be speaking a little bit about Parents as Teachers. You may have heard Nicole Fairley at the Equity Council, she's come twice, and she is always out and about. And I'm gonna leave to her to talk about this award and then I'll give you more.
Thank you so much for having us, we're really proud to be in Topeka Public Schools or Parents as Teachers across the nation. So we are one of several programs that were awarded a Blue Ribbon Affiliate, which is a model program, means to be our model program across the nation known as a Blue Ribbon Affiliate. And it's something that not all programs are able to attest to, but that really means that we are a program that you guys can count on, that is delivering high-quality services in our school district.
So more than this, or?
Um, this is my staff, but I also have a parent, I'm gonna introduce her first, that is Veronica Minos, um, she, she really doesn't recognize that, she is one of our advisory board members, but she's also a very involved parent along at Scott, the Voyager at Scott now, even though she no longer participates in the program, she had two younger boys that went through, but then also an older daughter, but she still is a big proponent of Parents as Teachers, so we really appreciate her. We have Joanna Penn here, Danielle Twenlow, Tori Oats, Suzie Carter, Kristen Childs, and Leslie Petty that are all here joining us.
And for those that don't know, we've been brought up to this on the line, what are some of the things that you have to do to get this?
So we really went through a rigorous self-study program, we had to meet 75% of the requirements and we met 90%, so I feel like that's really important for us that we did that. But really, like I shared, it really shares like our school district is delivering a quality program that is supporting parents birth to five, with children birth to five in our school district.
Congratulations. We're gonna be taking a photo with the entire team at the end, and they are always so humble and quiet in the background, but the Parents as Teachers program visits homes throughout the community and under this team alone, just some incredible things, which includes increase in enrollment has gone up each of the last several years and we thank you for all that you do. But hang around, because they're gonna wanna take questions.
Dr. Anderson?
Before they go, I was gonna ask the question, thank you for getting them started, I kinda wanted Nicole, if you wouldn't mind, just for everybody in the audience, if people aren't familiar with this program, what are the services that you deliver, the developmental milestones that you check, and what are some of the kinda the reference points that you have with other providers in the, I know you can do that in like two minutes.
Yeah, that's something I love to talk about. So our program is a home visitation program that supports families that have children birth to age five, we primarily focus on birth to age three. So as we realize, so much brain development happens before the age of three, so we're really trying to get in there and help parents to be their child's best and first teacher. So we go out to every home in the community, it doesn't matter where they are, as long as they live in USD 501, we are supporting those families. We have three different, well, actually four different centers now, down here at Quitton Heights, and if you drove past, you might see our Dabs group going on this evening, that's welcome to any family in USD 501 with a child under age five. We also have sites at Pine Ridge, at Avondale East, and now at Shana, we're gonna be opening playgroups there. So we have different playgroups throughout the week, different group connections, different events that we have. One of our recent things was we did what was called Darkness to Light, we partnered with KCSR just to provide information about child abuse, and that's something that for parents to be able to talk about. We also have things like a parent cafe where parents can come in and talk to other parents about different issues that may be going on. So we're able to help connect families together, we do developmental milestones, that's something the mission, making sure parents understand exactly what their child should be doing, but we also do screening, so we're helping connect families to tiny K services or to preschool intervention. We have a lot of children that we refer that way, that are able to get multiple services in there.
Wonderful, I asked that question just because you already stated how important it is for brain development, birth to five, this is one of our largest early childhood education programs in the district, so how many students now?
Uh, in our program?
Or families?
Uh, we serve over 230 families in our program last year, 2,000 home visits, so.
There you go, they all got more than one kid, that's a significant number of students who certainly could do what we do in later years without having you all help us do what we do in the early years, so thank you for what you do.
In addition to the Parents as Teachers award, and remember to hang around at the very end, we'll be taking pictures in about 10 minutes, we also this evening are excited to acknowledge our commended scholar. So we'd like for Topeka High administrative team to come forward and they begin the introduction of our commended scholar this evening.
All right, we are, first of all, I have to say, Ms. Morrissey is tied up with Scholars Bowl right now, she's judging and she let me know that she makes sure to give you her apology, she wanted to be here but she couldn't walk away from the Scholars Bowl that she was judging. So, I just wanna say that we are so proud of Haley, you know, right now she is in the top of her senior class. She's very, besides a rigorous academic schedule that she has, she's very involved in the theater, she's in National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, so we are very proud of her and also congratulations to her parents, they have also been very involved and supportive through her education years, so thank you for that.
So at this time, we'd like for Haley Piper to come on up. Share a little bit about what you think you're going to do after graduation and introduce the guest that will lead you.
Okay, so in the audience, I have my parents, Lauren and Andrew, who have been supporting me the whole time, you know, as parents do. So, the plan for me is to go to college and major in theater design, which I know is kinda weird for an academic person like me, but I found a passion in the technical side of theater, so that's the plan, and I will go to either Drake University in Des Moines or KU.
Any questions from our board members?
So, to be theater design, you must have had a teacher who swayed you.
Yes, absolutely, Mrs. Porter has been a major influence in my life, even though she only came to be high last year, in that year she's made so much of an impact.
Haley, I've known you for four years now, and I just wanna extend a personal congratulations for this award and honor, I'm sure you'll light the world on fire in Des Moines or Des Moines, I hope it's Des Moines. Actually, I saw your Facebook post on Facebook today where you were in Des Moines with basketball, so, either one is a good choice, I'm sure, so, congratulations.
Dr. McCarthy?
So Haley, what's the argument you would make to people who say that the arts are not worth spending on in our school system?
Oh, don't even get me started. The arts can make a huge difference in people's lives, even if students don't choose to go into the arts, fostering that spirit of creativity can be useful in so many fields other than the arts. And if you go into business or any other field, this creativity can help you so much.
Our next recognition is for one of our teachers, I had the pleasure of getting the opportunity to meet the Fulbright family the other evening, and at this time, we'd like to ask for our principal from Hope Street, Mr. Noel, to come on up and to introduce our teacher of the, history teacher of the year.
Let me say, you will never find a more dedicated educator anywhere. Mr. Fulbright's dedicated to kids, dedicated to education, and dedicated to the education of history. He knows what I'm about to say, cause he's heard it before, so you can see that look on his face, but they have Bill Nye the Science Guy, we have Thomas Fulbright the history light. Mr. Fulbright, can you come up with?
You have no idea how hard you've pushed him around so far.
At this time, if you'd like to, if you would like to share a comment or two, and if not, the board certainly may have a question or two that might help.
I'll just ask any questions. You are at the store, and I know you get things just, and it's my speech.
If you might share just a highlight in teaching at Hope Street for you and what has teaching special that might bring you to giving a couple of remarks since you are history teacher of the year.
Well, let's clarify that. Gilder Lerman, Mr. Teacher, there are lots of Kansas history experts.
That's a great start, right? Why do you love what you're doing?
Oh, why do I love what I'm doing? I guess I've never known anything else and, I don't know, why do I love what I'm doing? I've been doing it for 11 years, so there must be something, but I'm kind of hard time. Just the opportunity to teach kids something that I feel is super important, is rewarding when it shows that something is clicking, they see the importance of history, I think that's pretty awesome to engage in. My mom was a teacher, so I just always kinda saw it as a career field, and when I was in high school, I had some amazing history teachers who inspired me to go that route.
Is it specific how Hope Street is that you're that special?
Well, the staff that surrounds me is lots of fun, and my administrator is also super understandable, so maybe when some things don't go as planned, he's got some stories that I'm sure he'd be happy to share with you.
We'll do that later.
Mr. Woods, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Fulbright, congratulations, I was giving you a hard time.
That's okay.
So is somebody, well, my undergraduate major's is history, and I'm totally there with you, I'd like to hear you tell us, you know, just follow Dr. McCarthy's role, so what is the value of studying history? What would you tell some students who has it drilled in their head that they need to go study something in the natural sciences and mathematics?
Why they should study history as a focus?
And this is a softball question, I'm on your side.
Well, I could, I will preach to the importance of studying history in general, but to tell someone to focus on history would be a really bad idea for their career future.
We'll go with the first.
Well, why is it many people say that we are supposed to study history? What's the purpose? That's the question.
Oh, is that the question to me?
Do it, anyone on the board. So why do we study history?
So that we don't repeat it and that we understand that the choices in front of us, there are far more options than we think there are.
So, so we don't repeat it, cliche, is based on a philosopher's statement in 1905, "Those who do not remember history are condemned to repeat it." So the idea that, well, history is not itself being repeated, that Mark Twain misquoted it as saying that history does not repeat itself, but it rhymes, it's the idea that there are things similar to what happened in the past to what's happening today. So if we are to reflect on the instances in the past where something similar happened, it can help us make better decisions today, and that would be for the best.
So that's the answer I was looking for.
You want to introduce us with you this evening, sir?
This would be my wife and family manager. She's the one that holds everything together in our household, and my daughters Claire, Nora, and Meredith. Claire is a first grader.
Again, congratulations, Mr. Fulbright, for, we left you part off, the Kansas history teacher of the year, because we acknowledge you for all that you do, you truly are tremendous and your reputation through students. Proceed.
Thank you, sir.
Our next award is for our ARDI award finalists, we are so excited, our new principal, Ms. Broyles, and we have our proud principal, who is not our supervisor, Miss Sharp in the back, attended the ARDI award ceremony along with board members, we'd like Ms. Broyles to come on up, share a few comments about what the ARDI award is and what you're doing over at State Street, and if State Streeters that are with you, please come on up and introduce you.
Hello, good evening, thank you for allowing us to come, I am Amanda Broyles, the proud principal at State Street Elementary, and this is my dean of students, Ms. Lauren Peel, and we just are thankful to have the opportunity to share about the recognition that we received. We were nominated for the ARDI awards and it was a blessing just to be a part of the top three finalists, we were actually acknowledged with both NOTO, which I think they do amazing things for our community, so just to be a finalist amongst them was an honor, and Grace Cathedral for the greater spaces that they use. So, we were just so proud, not that we ever need accolades, but it is nice just to know that we're not only making an impact for our students at Topeka Public Schools, but we're making an impact in the Oakland community, and just to be recognized for that was just an amazing honor.
Do you wanna share some of what you do with the arts in your building that affects the community, you all opened it up for questions?
Absolutely, I'm actually gonna let Ms. Peel share that. Our students are able to receive, in addition to putting on musicals and plays, they also receive performing arts lessons weekly, so I'm gonna let her touch on that for just a moment.
We do have a performing arts director, Craig Fisher, and he goes into all the grade levels and teaches classes weekly, so kindergarten through fifth grade, they all get performing arts classes, and I was just in there able to watch one of the second grade classrooms, they were up in the auditorium on the stage doing interpretive dance to different styles of music, and I was just looking up there, looking at the second graders and thinking, those are future performers, those are the future artists of our community, and it was great to be a part of the ARDI awards because they also did a recognition for the Brown versus Board, the mural that they did and all of the local artists that painted that mural, and I was thinking, those could potentially be our State Street kids in the future impacting the community. So we just do a lot of great things, not only in those classes, but we have after-school clubs, we have singers' club, instrument clubs, and then from those clubs, our kids go out to the community and perform at various places here in Topeka, so it's just, it's an honor to be at State Street and thank you to the board members who came over the weekend and just helped support us, we really appreciated you being there.
Any questions from our board members?
Questions? Dr. McCarthy, do you wanna put that same question to our art teachers?
And they can't respond by asking another question.
I always look for this opportunity because at this Board of Education in particular has made it a priority to sustain funding for the arts despite the most difficult of times in our state. And it was a deliberate choice and it required sacrifice elsewhere to do so, and so I really think it's important for our patrons and our staff to hear directly from schools and especially from students themselves about the value they hold. I have my own opinions about how vital I think the arts are, and as our student eloquently said, the way it touches every single field and career that a person takes on because of that creativity that they learn, the ability to collaborate, the ability to express themselves in various means, including with words. We also know that kids who are involved in the arts perform more strongly in other academic areas because it's stimulating parts of the brain that the other subjects don't touch, so with my little speech, I'll give you a chance to add to that.
You know, I think that I would just like to follow that up with two things. One, I feel like the sacrifice that we're making to make this program possible is just another way that Topeka Public Schools and State Street is making opportunities despite challenges, so I'm proud of that. And I also want to say, you know, we always say students first, well, what does that really look like? And so one example I can give is, Mrs. Sharp and I had the privilege of this past summer supervising when all of our ballet performers were on stage, one came off the stage and she looked at me and she just looked beautiful and she had her costume and she had a smile on her face, and as I was congratulating her, I kid you not, fifth grade student, and I will never forget it, had tears in her eyes and she said, "Mrs. Broyles, that is my one time that I will be a star on the stage." And I just thought, that right there may we never forget why we do this. And I said, you know, you were a star on the stage, but I know there's gonna be many more, but in the back of my head, I thought, we are giving her an opportunity that she may not have had if it wasn't for in that school wall. So just thank you for continually making this happen, and just know that the work is not only just impacting our students, but communities. If you come to one of our shows, you will see a line formed out of the school building, the Oakland community, that is their place that they come for theater and for performances, and so it's not just a school impact, it's a community impact. And so it's not just a school impact, it's a community impact.
When you first entered, you saw the pictures that were going, and later we have a proclamation that will be approved under consent. It is Native American Heritage Month, and we would like someone to come up and read a portion of the proclamation. Do we have a volunteer to do that that is in our, that is within our board meeting that would like to speak to Native American Heritage Month? Thank you so much to our K&amp;A person who's volunteered to do that. You are so wonderful. Thank you.
Just capturing your audience.
So it says, "Whereas Topeka Public Schools wishes to commemorate the sacrifices of indigenous people or the Native American Indians across this great land from time immemorial up to and including the 21st century. And whereas during the month of November, we take the time to reflect upon the contributions made in the past, to celebrate the peaceful coexistence of the presence, and to eagerly anticipate our future as we proudly accept the gifts continually given from the members of the Native American Indians, including students in Topeka Public Schools. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Unified School District Number 501, Topeka, Kansas, does proclaim the month of November 2018 as Native American Heritage Month."
Thank you. And as our final acknowledgement and recognition, we are so excited. In the board meeting today, and we will be stopping after this particular recognition and having a brief break, and we have some refreshments, and we'll be taking photos. At the board meeting this evening, if you are staying for the other half of the meeting, we'll be giving a detailed analysis of our graduation rates. That will be happening again shortly after the board meeting, the rest of the board meeting beginning. At this time, we want to talk about some graduation highlights. Our graduation rate, as we get ready to talk a little bit about that, we want to share comes from a systemic process that we've had in place that has led for achievement improvements in every school, elementary, middle, and high. Now for consecutive years have increased in academic achievement. But graduation rates at all comprehensive schools have increased this year. Each of the principals are here, and they all have students, and so they'll be coming up as well. And I would like to ask for those principals at this time to come up because they're going to be opening up for questions under the highlight portion to share a little bit and/or to answer questions. The systemic pieces that we have in place, we're just going to share what year they started that are different than what we did in the past, that now continues to result in some larger gains. Topeka Public Schools has had gains over time since the 2010 graduation rates have adjusted the formula in 2010. So we've had gains over time. The gains that are this significant have been notably so in many schools over the last several years. So here are the system-wide things. And our principals at this time, please come on forward. That would mean get us out of your seat, come on up. High school principals? All right, come on up. Let's give our principals a call. And they'll be speaking to some of these items. And if you're an assistant principal, if you are a student that came with your principal or a counselor, be prepared because the question might be thrown to them. There are students from each of these high schools here, and there are also some counselors from some of the schools. So we ask for you to open those questions up as you choose. The system, and they can speak to any components. Every school as of 2016 is now using the Tyler Data Warehouse. Not just the high schools, but the elementary as well. In 2016, we started data consultations, and those data consultations are monthly from the district, but weekly from the school. So every week, a principal has those. If you want more information on what that looks like, they can tell you. This is not just our high school, this is K-12. In 2016, the senior spreadsheet started, and those are weekly reviews talking about juniors and seniors, and are they on track? Again, they can talk about what that looks like for their individual school. A C T in 2016 was purchased and offered during the school day because the school board allowed for us to use those dollars to purchase A C T testing for any student that wanted to take the A C T. That was in 2016. We now, as of this year, can give it to juniors and seniors because there's now legislation allowing it as well for juniors. The 2016 attendance system for home visits was implemented. If a student is absent two days without parent contact, then a home visit is then made. The superintendent's advisory was implemented, primarily focused on Highland Park High School, but the superintendent's student advisory allows for feedback specifically on college barriers that are in place that need to be removed. In 2016, the equity training was provided. It was provided in July as a retreat for principals to talk about and understand there are barriers in place that need to be removed. And that equity training initially came from equity consultants, and in 2017, an M O U with the Midwest Equity System was done to continue to do that work. In 2016, the data utilization training was done for all staff. So the difference is that clerical staff now, as of 2016, they've had training on how to look at data and make sure that transcripts and those other things, data entry in terms of when students enroll, that those things are corrected in real time. So that's an adjustment. It was their first district-wide clerical training in that particular area. The dropout task force was implemented. That primarily was focused on Highland Park High School, but basically it's a team of people looking at these students that dropped out. The other schools may have that as well, and they can speak to if they do and what that looks like. Across the district, increased counselors, so we now have a national average of about 250 to 1 in terms of counselors. But the increased counselors for high school were focused on college. Expansion of Abbott K-12, which is in our strategic plan. In 2016, the mental health and student services expanded specifically aimed at high school, but also elementary and middle. The high school included the bus passes that were also offered as of last year. The other three things, the monthly college trips were required. Prior to 2016, college trips occurred, but they primarily were focused on gifted and Abbott students. Now they are required at every high school that started in 2016. The course offerings at middle school and the dual credit offerings also increased. Part of this is to make sure that, you know, this is a system over time. It's not an overnight thing, it's not one thing at one school. But systemically, if you build a system, then that system will continue to be maintained as other people come in and as transitions are made, if these key components are in place. And this is in any district. I really believe the system that we have in place and our great leaders have helped make these pieces happen with some awesome teachers. The virtual school, the career pathways, and the bus passes were all in 2017. The virtual school opened. Mr. Dick helped apply for that particular school to open, and it is now operating out of Abindale West, which you can see in 2017, opened at that time. In 2018, and for those that don't know what Abindale West is, it expanded the alternative school. So kids who might traditionally drop out are actually students that stay in, and they now have a place to go if they're a Gen or a kid, other than Hope Street. There really was not another spot unless you had a special education designation. But now we have Abindale West, which now also has the virtual school. In 2018, the expansion of the A C T Aspire. That expansion, A C T Aspire, has traditionally been offered to freshmen, to ninth and 10th graders. We now will be offering A C T, third, A C T Aspire enrichment and curriculum offerings from grades three through 12. So it's in elementary, middle, and high, and this year really takes that next step. 2018, of course, T-CAP opened and the College Prep Academy opened. Those are just a small list, but those are some key highlights for you to know systemically. Now with those highlights, as we go to this next piece, we now want to share, turn it over to our principals, and we want to share what our graduation rate is. Before we get to that piece, we would like to say that there are noise makers in your seat. If there's a noise maker in your seat, get your noise maker ready. This is some exciting stuff. And if you have confetti, we have our confetti ready? All right. If only we had a drummer. We even have a drummer. As of 2018, Topeka Public Schools has eliminated the achievement gap. As you can see on the end, we not only have eliminated the achievement gap, but we have every school, every comprehensive school with a graduation rate above 80%, 95%. We are so excited. We thank now we are principals of all who have helped make this happen. I'm going to turn over the microphone to them to answer any questions that you have. So as you can see, the very end, it's tiny print. Our African-American subgroup, our Hispanic subgroup, our ELO, our free reduced lunch subgroup are all graduating above 80%. So there is no longer an achievement gap, so we're excited about that. All right, we're going to turn it over to our board. You saw the system, so any questions that you have, and if you don't have questions, each one of the principals may have a comment or two they'd like to make. And any students that are in the audience, students? If you were a commended scholar, if you were a senior of the month, if you were a student who just tag along with your schoolmama. We ask for you to be prepared for questions as well. More members will turn it over to you if there's a question that you'd like to ask for any of your principals.
Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. So this, I think you are, you are right to celebrate this, to help us celebrate this the way we should. That is a tremendous achievement. It's kind of why, it's why we all ran this board. That joke for people who don't know what I'm talking about is because this is a volunteer joke. The beauty of this, though, you look at this, and there is, there is, you see convergence between those three lines. Those are three major subgroups in graduation rates. And really, at the end of the day, that's really what it's all about. It's about graduation rates. We are always going to be focused on test scores. We're always going to be looking to try to measure what people are and see if they demonstrate what they learn. But at the end of the day, we need them to graduate. So you all are to be commended. This is outstanding, it's amazing for us to be able to sit up here at this day. You guys, we know you all do the real work. So we kind of consider ourselves a support staff. It's our job, well, yeah, and all of the teachers in the classroom. It's our job to make sure that you all have the resources you need to do to accomplish these goals. Question I want to ask, I guess, this is probably the $64,000 question or more than that these days. What, to what can you attribute this, or who had to try to isolate it down? And I know that's unfair with so many variables out there. But you could isolate it to, you know, one or two key things you think that are really making a difference now. We'll see this more so in data, and Dr. Anderson will help us with that. But when it's time to start aligning budget priorities, we're going to want to focus in on some of those things.
So as you answered your question, please share your four-year graduation rate and then share the answers to the question.
It may be a little different for each one of us, so I'll just cheer and speak to Topeka West. I think our graduation rate is 95% this year. Proud of that. I wanted to be 95% for a long time, so we're pretty proud of that. I think for us to get there, it's, it was a four-year class for me. So that was my first class when I started as principal. They were freshmen, so they've been with us for four years. We had continuity of the administrative team over those four years. And we know our system of what we want to do with kids, to build relationships, and we have those guys all the way through. And so every year, we got a little bit better, and we're able to get to that 95% goal with our four-year group. So I'm pretty, pretty happy about that. There's a lot of work that goes into all those things, but it's a lot of contact with kids, touching kids, talking to kids, getting staff and everybody on board with our philosophy and what we're doing all along the way. And so there's a lot that goes into that, so that kind of overly simplifies it, but that's kind of the gist of it.
Ours is 81.3 for four, but we're well into the 90s on our five-year, which I'm very proud of. And I would say, if you want a short answer, you asked this thing, it's a very laser-like focus on what we're there for, which is to graduate students. As a building, though, we've done a lot of things, as Mr. Dick just said, really zeroing in on relationships. I think our move to look at our punitive responses and whether there were more natural consequences. Restored practices is just a component of that. We're really talking to kids about those things that might be affecting them, whether it's behavior, attendance, tardies, and doing that in a manner that they can hear us has been a real shift and change. Zeroing in on standards-focused discussions with kids, making sure that A's are A's, that the grade reflects what they know, has meant more conversations between students and teachers that is targeted at very specific things they know. I think that's been helpful, and we're just really beginning that journey. We also have had teachers jump up and do pretty amazing things, and I could go on a long time, I won't. But one that sticks out to me is last year I had a teacher specifically asked to have a Trojan time with just fifth-year seniors and wanted to get them across. And he worked with me, I would go out and visit with all of them and keep talking to them. Several of them came back when they finished, and a couple of them finished into October of this year or into September so that they would count. It was fun to watch them hang in there. And I'm most proud that we do that, that even though we want to hit the rates, we had a student just finish two days ago. And he won't count on those numbers, but he has a diploma in his hands. So I think having staff and people hang in, and remember that's the ultimate goal, and help students who may have struggled for a variety of reasons along the way understand that we're still there with them, and we can help them get past that has really been a huge part of what I hope. We've just done that steady climb that I hope is very sustainable and continues to grow, which I'm very proud of my staff for.
Ms. Perry, when you shared your rate, can you share where you were and where you are now?
Sure. We were, I remember sitting in a space during Equity Council, and our numbers went up. And it showed it there about a year ago this time, and we were at 68.6%. And I am super happy, as the proud mama of Highland Park High School, that we are reporting 86.9%. And how we did that? There was a list, you saw the list that Dr. Anderson put up there? She didn't even put all of the stuff that she pushing us to do. She didn't come out with horns and bells. She was like, "Come on, y'all got to do this." Because it was a sense of urgency, and I didn't have four years. I didn't have four years for that senior class, and I knew I had to hit the ground running. I wasn't taking a lot of time for buy-in, we knew that the results would get the buy-in. And so from the beginning, I made a promise to you when you first approved me to be the principal there, that I was going to do something, and I was going to improve. And the first thing that I share with our students is that your demography does not determine your destiny. And with that means we've got to do something to close those gaps, but also to raise us up so that then we are on an equal playing field with our colleagues and our cohorts throughout the district. And you all and community partners have also made that possible for us. And beyond seeing things as a, as a dream, I would say that I put before them a goal. Because you, you dream and you're asleep. So there's not a lot that you have to do and work towards when you're having a dream of graduation. But you have to really envision yourself walking across that stage. And we begin to put that crystal ball in front of the students to say, "You can, you will, and I will help you." And then when you get across that stage, what's next? And so we were very intentional to push college and career and shoot higher than simply graduating. Because as the schoolmama, they were all hyphenated parries, and what do I expect from my own child? It's to look beyond high school and what's next, to help you have a great future and forge into the future and be not just a competitor locally, but I want you to be a global competitor. And so we started shooting over and over and over the top for the students. I can recall one individual student who, I knew he had that light in him, and he could do something different when he finished. And he already had a plan, he was, he was going to go to work, nothing wrong with that. He wanted to be employed, he wanted to be a taxpayer. But I knew he had a little more that I needed to tap into. And just about on a weekly basis, he kind of got to where he would kind of roll his eyes, and I'd go, "Okay, remember, I'm the schoolmama. You don't get to roll your eyes at me." And so we would have these conversations all the time, and, and he would continuously say, "No, I'm just going to work. I'm going to stay here, and I'm just going to stay at home, and I'm going to work, I'm going to work." And because the college-going culture and what was next became so prevalent in our building, the morning of our senior breakfast, which is the day before graduation, before we even go over and do our rehearsal, he sent me an email and said, "Do you think we can still get me to go to college?" And he is about, he's just finished his midterms, and he has almost finished really a first semester in college. And so just putting that out there before them so that they know that they can do it and we'll help them. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, I'm Dale Noel, Hope Street Academy. I think all of you know that students that come to Hope Street, every one of them that enters our doors are behind in credits, and quite honestly, many of them never thought they would graduate. Year before last, our graduation rates added 53.7%. Last year, which is the year we're reporting out this fall, our graduation rate jumped to 76.8. You know, I agree with Ms. Perry here. It's really hard to pinpoint. It's just a combination of factors that went into it, from Dr. Anderson and what she's pushed us to do, all the way down to the teachers and what we pushed them to do, and counselors, all staff, office staff, everybody. I mean, it takes a village. I think one of the things that we've focused on at Hope Street is career readiness. I think one of the most important things that we've done is we've kind of looked at where we're going this year, and we've kind of projected out that we anticipate that of our graduating class for this year, we are knocking on the door of, all out of our graduating class, 50% of them will have completed a program at WIT or T-CAP. So I think at Hope Street, what, what really helps us is pushing that career aspect for kids. We also push the college aspect, but we want to push the career aspect as well, prepare them for life after high school. So I want to thank everybody.
Ms. Kirk.
Well, we're really proud of all the hard work and the success of our students. And I just wish we had that the graduation, the chief of gap picture, what it was like when we all started on the board, what was it, 11 years ago now? We've got one more year to go. 11 years ago, because it was appalling. Even, and, and, and I was so sad when I saw the very first time what had was happening to our kids. I said, those are our kids. We're not getting them through. I was almost in tears because it was that bad, and I, from my perspective. Now it's tears of joy, as Patrick said, but it's...
Not real tears, is there a lot of allergens?
But it is, I mean, it really is. I just wish we had that picture here because it was grim. And to say that we have, to, to increase, to make the graduation gap disappear, I just hope it continues to be gone, really gone. Means that we've not only been educating our students well, because we've reached that higher point in the total number of graduates, but we've identified the facts, that the issues that kept some of our at-risk populations at that point, our Hispanic and our African-American populations, we weren't getting to them. I mean, we missed them. Somehow, we weren't teaching in a way that made it work for them. We have learned how to do that, and in a district as adverse as this district is, it is a critical component. And I think it's probably one of the hardest components to deal with, is the cultural issues that separate us and our views of the world out there that separate us, is because of cultural, cultural issues. So we've, we've dealt with that, and I think we have a special place in the, in the sky up there for people who have learned how to bridge those gaps. So thank you.
I really appreciate that you shared, Dr. Anderson, all the steps that were taken along the way, because all of this on the board had been on long enough to have seen whatever the new fat of the day has come along claiming that it's going to be the magic bullet. And what all of you have proved is that there is no magic bullet.
There's, there's about 100, 100 factors or more that go into making the changes. We, we were stalled for a long time in this district despite making other systemic improvements, and it really required us to dig deeper and look at what else needed to be done. We've always had fabulous teachers, we've always had great administrators, but, but that in itself isn't enough. Teachers needed more support. They needed structures in place that were going to allow them that contact with kids. There's not any one schedule or any one factor that can suddenly make it happen. It, it's just hard work every single day. That, that's what makes it happen, in paying attention to kids, and that's what you guys have done. And we are extremely proud. We cannot be happier as a board, and we know that you'll continue to do great things. So thank you so much for your hard work, and thank you to our teachers for helping our students graduate.
Ms. Johnson.
I would agree. I just want to congratulate you all, and definitely as we look at this day, that we have much to celebrate, but as Dr. McCarthy alluded to, the fact that it's a constant intentionality so that we don't go backwards, that we're always going forward, not only in our graduation, but all the things that get us there. And I do recognize this strand of touching, seeing, addressing the needs of each of our children. That's the kind of connect that allows us to make these kind of gains. And so I applaud you all. Applaud, you know, the fact that we see it happen gives us more determination to make sure it keeps happening for our kids in this district. And so I appreciate your work, and as I said, we're here to support, we're here to be cheerleaders. Definitely, you know, would even like to hear some other things that come to mind as you see the needs of your students on the ground, that we don't always get to do, but we appreciate the opportunities to come into the school, to visit, those, those special moments, but definitely are open to hear more of those conversations, even on a one-on-one, just the needs that you have so that we can continue to meet the need of our kids.
Okay.
I'll try to be brief in my congratulations. Congratulations to you all and your faculties and staff. And I don't know if you're going to stay when Mr. Kip gives his more detailed presentation, but one of the questions I have is, the boys consistently have, or underperform the girls, 10%, and what are we going to do to fix that? What ideas do you have?
Will you all be around for the board meeting?
If you're going to be around, we can do that later. Okay, because I'd love to hear, I'd love to hear your thoughts on, you know, historically, about a day or nine years it's been. So it's a good way to figure it out. I look forward to your, to that conversation. Thank you. Congratulations.
As we mentioned that specifically, I'm so glad Ms. Johnson and all the others that talked about touching each child, the suggestion lead, Mr. Noel, get it right on the head, that'll take a lot of people to make this happen. Advisor Excel has contributed more than $200,000, specifically in high school, college, and career, and he could not make it here this evening, but right before this started, he takes something and asks, could he give a shout-out of a particularly congratulation as one of our largest investors in the college and career plan? So we'll start that. He gives probably one minute or less.
Hey all, this is Cody Foster, Advisors Excel. I wanted to just record a quick message. Unfortunately, we couldn't be there tonight. We were going to try and be there because of the exciting news, but to just everyone on the board and everyone associated with 501, a few years ago, when we sat down with Larry and Dr. Anderson and said we wanted to do more to try and support students, and we wanted to know that if we made these investments, that it would pay off. And to get the news and see the success that's happened over the last few years is incredible. It's everything that we were hoping would become of this, and it's been a great partnership. We're looking at some ways that we can continue to partner even more and actually going to in the next few weeks, going to challenge some other business leaders around town to step up and hopefully duplicate some of the success that we've been able to have together to move some of the graduation rates and the other success measures for students. So thank you all for the support. We're happy to be partnered with you and looking forward to more and more success in the future.
Other members in our audience as well includes Barbara Stapleton, who is with the Greater Topeka Chamber, but she's also Workforce Investment and has been at the table and helped create the strategic plan. And there are many others that are in the audience as well. We're just partners in the community. Thank you. It takes all of us to make this happen. Just say for just a moment, because we really are going to take pictures. I know y'all are hungry. Do you want your picture? If you want us to put you on. I think Mrs. Creaker has, you're going to get a plaque sent to your building with your banner that you'll be able to bring up, showing that you have eliminated the achievement gap. And I think Ms. Creaker has that banner, so when we take our photos, we'll end up putting that up front. So if you ask the board members to come on up, and let's give them one more round of applause.[1790.73]